Number of board of selectmen is in order for September 27th. Time is 7:01. All three selectmen are present. Town administrator is present, the county secretary is present, and Leo Martel is reporting for those who like to view who are not at this time. Thank you, Leo. Okay, gentlemen, we have some minutes, we have two sets of minutes. We have to go with the public minutes first.
I'll approve the public meeting minutes from September 27th, 28th as amended.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes, gentlemen?
Well, we're well done.
Are there any discussion on favor? I'm sorry, come to you. We have non-agenda, but we also have another set of minutes. This is for the non-public minutes.
I'll make a motion. What's the time on those, Mike?
It's 6:30 September 27th.
September 27th. So, I'll make a motion to approve the non-public September 27th meeting at 6:30 PM. As amended, that one was amended?
No, it was not.
And I'd like to make a motion to seal those minutes once we're done signing them.
On your first motion, I'll second that motion.
Hear any discussion on the minutes on that first motion? All in favor? Second motion?
I'll second the second motion to seal the minutes.
Any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor? Aye. And for the record, Leo, I just want to make a correction to what my first, how I opened the meeting tonight. Today is October 4th, not September 27th.
I didn't even hear that, Mike.
I did, and I felt that.
He's reading from his script.
But for the record, I can make the correction.
Well, we will. All of it's up to you, and then we'll seal them up and send them back.
Just hang on a minute. Just hold on to that. That's going to be coming up. Okay, I'll go open up the public comments before we get going into the agenda. I'm going to start with Roger. You're on the agenda tonight. Get any public comment?
Okay, thank you, yes. I'm just coming here to kind of get an update from the board, a read of lay the ground, I guess, over the next year or two.
Why don't we hold that? We're going to hold that to the agenda. This is open, you're on the agenda, so I said you're good. We're going to go to public comment. If you're not on the agenda, you have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, okay.
Sir, no, is that, okay? Leo? Okay, now we'll bring it back to the agenda. Roger, you are on the floor now.
Okay. Roger Rice, 3:30 start, highway north. I'm here mainly because I wanted to get a read from the selectmen on their wishes. I would see myself as a resident of Dunbarton, very happy to volunteer for anything that I can do time-wise in any manner having to do with either advice or relating experience having to do with solid waste and that kind of thing. You have a full-time, very competent manager, so I'm not sure what your needs will be for me in the future. Because I was a part-time employee, you've paid my license. That comes up in January. I don't know whether it benefits the town to pay that again or not. If you do, then I'm fine, I'm favorable to that.
What's the total of that fee, Roger?
Pardon?
What's the total of that fee?
$50.
Okay. Roger, you're still listed as a home-storm retainer on our list of available employees if we need a hand on there.
Right.
And I would like to continue to have you available on call as we need it.
Roger, I don't think you were at the meeting, but as a board, we had come up with a consensus and discussed keeping you on board in case we have some vacations or we have some injuries where we need somebody on a supervisory level to fill in.
Okay.
So, we wanted to keep you in that.
Okay. Now, I didn't know that. I guess now I...
And the thing is, we also made a consensus that, I think, is we're aware of how you've worked in the past, which was great, but I think it's had you work more than eight hours in one day is kind of exhausting for you. So, we thought as a supervisor, which you have experience, you could easily fill in for maybe three hours in the morning, three hours in the evening, and that would be a great day.
Yeah.
Sometimes we just need that supervisor experience, and that's what we were lacking sometimes. Do you have any comments?
Other than the NARA, how does that help you out, Roger? Just so we know.
Yeah. Let me first say that for Woody, he uses that to some degree, and so a lot is sold through the NRA, but not everything. When I was in Lee, I came in totally new to solid waste. I had been in construction, module housing kind of thing beforehand, and so, but I came with a business background. And so, what I saw as I became manager and got the lay of the ground and how things worked and where our benefits were, I felt the NRA was an extremely valuable tool for us to be involved in. This is the town of Lee. We had been member for years, and I don't think anything, no, I don't think of anybody previous, 15 years before, the man who was in charge of all DPW and, no, I shouldn't say DPW, the highway department and the trash had been named recycler of the year sometime, I think in the 70s. And I felt that that was a good organization to be part of and was very active, and about a year later was asked to be a trustee, and as soon as I was trustee at the very first meeting, it was, "We need you to be the treasurer," which is one of those things of, you know, overwhelming. I accepted it and have been doing that role except for one year for the last 11. So, I've been very involved in the NRA. I've been very supportive. I'm kind of part of it because I'm on the Board of Trustees, so I wouldn't say, I would say I'm biased in favor of their operation. I see all the benefits that they provide, so I'm much more pro-NRA than, say, Woody might be. And so, I'm at most marketing meetings, I've hardly ever missed a trustees' meeting, and I think it's a wonderful thing for the town of Dunbarton to be part of this and to be able to draw benefits education-wise, marketing of recyclables, getting a lay of the ground when like a contract comes up for trash renewal, which is now behind you, things like that.
So, did they not, the NRA, did they not make an agreement for the glass?
Glass was a big discussion at both the trustees' meeting and the marketing meeting previous because it's kind of a big issue, and it's like it is, the environment is changing at this point of, and it feels like it's about declining flip with, the executive director has put a lot of pressure on DOT, who has said they will accept glass to be used anywhere as a road base, and so we went back to him, the executive director, to say, "Look, just saying it's okay doesn't really hold a lot of traction. Tell people they should be doing it, and it's practically free," because we, as a state, have, I, well, I won't say millions because I really don't know the number, but we have hundreds of thousands of tons of this crushed-up glass that we're building without making much use of, and it's a great thing to put in the ground underneath concrete pads.
I thought Woody alluded to a couple weeks ago, that he said, I think the organization, they created a contract with Canada to basically take some of it off our hands.
That'll be a little bit, though, because what they need, let me see, Dunbarton does the same as Lee does. We put in glass, we put in ceramic, we put in other glass-like substances. Canada wants pure glass. It can't be anything else in it. So, once somebody decides to switch, they get rid of what they have, and then what they put in their container is only glass. It can be beverage, it can, you know, black wine, soda bottles, and food jars.
I think what Bob was saying is that you're involved already. Buying that membership for the $50, does that help you in any way? Strictly that, because you're already kind of at all the meetings anyway, and I think we already buy a membership for Woody, am I correctly? So, Bob, I think he's asking, you know, does that help you any because you're already at the meeting, or is there any benefit to the town for that?
Okay, well, actually, there's, I see where you're coming from because I mentioned that to Lee. The, there's two things at issue here. One is the licensing with the Department of Environmental Services. It comes due in January. And then the other thing is the fee to be a member of the NRA, which is normally the town is a member, and then the employees by that can go to the meetings. And so, I'm eligible to go to the meeting. They didn't, for some reason, maybe paperwork-wise, didn't see me as part of the town of Dunbarton. They did last year, so I'm really not sure how it happened, but the annual meeting is coming up, and so I went this earliest part of the week, I went to and sat down with the executive director to get a lay of the ground of what I want to be paying for or need to pay for. And I said, "The annual meeting's coming up, it's a dinner, I think it's about $40 or $50. I want to pay for that because I don't believe in a free lunch, and so I'll be there because I have to read the treasurer's report, so it isn't that kind of, I really have to be there." So, I'm paying that, but I asked about the fee because I got an invoice, and he said, "Look, don't worry about the invoice." He said, "Give me that thing because that shouldn't have been sent to you." And so, that $50 is gone. Ironically, the $50 I'm talking about is the licensing with DES next January. So, there is no fee that you should have to pay having to do with the NRA. And I expect next year with the volunteer work, which I won't go into, just the things that I do for the NRA.
So, the fee you were talking about, we already pay anyway?
Yeah. So, we're all set on those issues.
All right. What fee are you asking us for the?
I'm just getting a read for next January. I'll have a bill to be a member, not a member, to be licensed by Department of Environmental Services, which I need to have, and I see where you're coming from, and so it's a...
Don't all the employees have to have that license?
Every employee has to be licensed.
I think they all get renewed.
Yeah, they all get renewed.
And then as a retainer, we're keeping you a retainer, then it'll automatically be renewed.
But if it lapses, then you pay more when you go to sign them up. It'll be $75 instead of $50.
So, we're going to pay the $50. I think that's, that's in consensus, yeah.
That's where I was going. I was waiting for you to get done, to get to the short version.
You brought us the long way, I got to.
Yeah, the $50 fee for licensing is something, I, when the bill comes to the individual, and the individual's got to get it, the employees would get it to Woody, and now they either turn it into Woody or turn it into the office, whichever is...
I'd appreciate if you went to the, Woody. As supervisor, he should be completely aware of that.
Yes.
So, I'll turn it to him. Let him know we, you know, approved it as a consensus.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. I hope we clarified that.
Yes.
I took you down this path of the last, I didn't mean to do this. Okay, gentlemen, we have some, we have one set of bids about painting, but, Lee, I just, we have an outstanding set of bids. I'll refer to after the painting, this is for the siding.
Correct. I made two telephone calls, one last Friday, to Keith, when I spoke to him verbally, and he said he would get me a quote, and then I followed up earlier in this week, and I called him today asking if he was going to be able to get that to us, so he hasn't gotten back to me.
Okay, I can check that off my list down the bottom.
Oh, okay.
The question is, the thing is, at this point, gentlemen, I ask you, do we wait another week for this bid to come in, or do we make a decision based upon the information we have at this point? He's had a week to respond.
I am going to tell you that the guys are getting booked up. He's already, JMR's already up to six weeks, so...
We were going to decide tonight, and we're going to deal with what we have, you know, as far as I'm concerned. Could have made an effort, at least, he's got his bid in front of him. All he has to do is find out what the bar was.
Yeah, he knew exactly what he wrote on it for material and whatnot.
He knew how many square, it's not, it's not a big surprise.
So, we're going to split it into two as we originally decided?
Yeah, and I think tonight we just decide on the side that they enter in through here. That's the larger of the two sides and the one that's more visible, and then a week or so down the road, we'll decide on the other half of it on the back.
Depending on what we have left.
What a half on the back. Okay, so we'll make a motion to accept that bid as, because I don't have any paperwork.
Oh, you don't have, do you?
The siding one you don't have?
Maybe I do. No, I do not.
No, it wasn't in that package, Mike.
All right, you want to refer to the minutes?
Yes.
Is it clear enough? Maybe I have to go get it.
I don't think it had a dollar amount in the minutes.
Well, we can, we'll continue. Let's open these other bids, we'll just table that, we can start the other ones while we're there.
We haven't seen that one there, so I'll be right back.
Now, I want to just change subjects.
Want to review?
Yes, yes, we want to change subjects, start reviewing the bids for the painting and safety complex of the transfer station. This has just been opened here, I've not seen this myself. I'll move that to you. And this, for the public's benefit, we're reviewing bids to paint the transfer station and the safety complex, the entry and exit stairwells where the paint is coming off.
Two sides of the transfer station.
Two sides of the transfer station, yeah. And that's where the paint is peeling significantly.
Which one is this one for? Suppose number one. This is a blue picture?
You're definitely one, I'll take it.
That looks like the transfer station, I guess. West side and south side.
Yep, that is sure.
Ah, that could, no, that could be the, yeah. Well, I just read that there, yeah, Mr. George, please.
Yeah, he's doing staining, by the way.
Okay, transfer station, where you walk, let's see, down the right. On the fire department, there's columns when you walk in the door there, too. Fred?
Yes, on the, the police department side, there's columns, both with police and the fire.
There is, okay, I remember standing for the police department, I didn't remember that.
Yeah, on the other side of the building, there's not.
Okay. Just to let you know, I actually took pictures there for you there, can I?
There's columns. Yeah, you can see how it's, that's how nasty the paint is. I bet, I'll check that out on site. There's the columns, there's the paint.
Thank you, Lee.
Yeah, it's coming off big time.
Was that something you noticed?
No, this is a picture of the, of the police station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
First, the columns.
You doing the transfer station first?
Yeah, we can start with the transfer station first, will you? I have a little bit of this number here. I don't know what that one is.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that.
No, it's coming your way.
Do you want me to make copies?
No, I think we're good. We'll just take a moment.
South side, that's the, must be the police station.
No, that's transportation, the west side and the south side, yeah. And the key thing is, they're repairing the little bit of rocky wood under the bottoms, and they're using stain.
Okay, his, his, he only guarantees it for seven years except for the splash-up. So, anything that splashes up, anything that splashes up on it, though, isn't covered under the warranty.
Oh, brown spy.
Okay, this is a police one. Which one did you have?
That's the transfer station.
Here's the police and fire from the other one, Bob, if you want to...
Yeah, I'll have you look at this one, too.
Look at the, those transfer stations, so 58 in the south, which this is the south, so that's more.
Do you want to highlight it? It might be easier to identify. With some mark, highlight on it.
Okay, and then this. That's big.
Those 1360 on that police.
That's a big difference here.
Yeah, see, he's going here, replacing a little rock.
Sure is, if you look here, replace one quarter trim on Woody's corner, replace one sixth trim on the bottom, south was corner. Basically the same thing.
It's going to rewrite that, so.
Get it ready, you want to?
When you get to the, oh, you want to tally them all down?
I'm looking at this, I'm, because he's got...
Yeah, put them all together, Bob, because this guy's got a total, right? Well, you do have the entrances separated.
Right, but the thing is, are we going to do a piecemeal like that? We're going to end up doing a total, total, right? I don't think we're going to paint four, three doors, and then one door one painted. That'll be a big job.
Lee, can I ask you, has the painting started over at the highway department?
The lift was supposed to have been delivered today, so I was planning on doing a drive-by, but I didn't do that yet.
So, reliably is getting a lift?
Pardon?
Reliably is getting a lift.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Jeff was surprised to hear that because he said, "He's surprised nobody does painting on ladders anymore."
5640 is his total on this. 5640 is his total for everything.
This one here is 4550.
Okay, that's for everything on it.
Yeah. Okay, discussion, gentlemen. Just to make a summary, I have two quotes on the, the transfer station first. I have a higher one and a low one. The delta is, and they're doing about the same work, is, it's going to be, there's a difference of about close to $3,000.
What did he give on his, and what's his?
Eighty-six.
Oh, okay. So, there's 4600, 2800, yeah.
I have no problem with that.
Mike, are they painting both sides complete on both sides?
No, they're doing the west side and south side. South side, west side, identical.
Complete, though, right?
Yeah. I don't see where it's not complete.
That's the direction, so it'd be able to paint those sides completely.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's one. Just to give it a perspective, then the second one?
Second one is just the opposite.
Just the opposite.
Go to Bob's tally page.
Right here, Bob's tally is right there.
53640 and...
That's about a good, almost $900. So, I think we have a split, we have a split verdict here.
Okay.
If we go by a little bit, you want to wait?
Same, same work on?
Same work. He broke it down by size, but we took...
I'm going to double-check these by the size of the doors, okay?
Sure. He's got the doors, the fire station, two, three.
Lee, a little different.
Police department entrance.
Yep, that's a small one.
I don't either.
I think it's quick. And we split it, I mean, kept the job, so time is of the essence at this point, too.
This way here, I'm both scratching their heads saying, "What did I do wrong on the other one?"
I agree. Here's the big difference. See, looks like the back door of the police reliable was much higher than that.
Yeah, not much.
Not much, probably. They all added up, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to review these ones that we're talking about already first to make sure we have substantial amount of money in there?
We want to look at the headline budget. Lee, what's the $50 figure?
I think we had $36,000 on our minutes last week. Just want to keep a tally on that because as we get closer...
Thirty-six, after, we're going to take out some money for the generator maintenance.
And we were going to leave a little bit of money up there for the second floor if we could to the end of the year.
So, the thing is, if we took both of these, we still have, I think we'd have enough money left to do at least $10,000 of the upstairs. I don't know how much you want to put and reserve for that. Here, I'm going to rely on your expertise there.
You might want to even look at it next year because it's going to be tough just to get someone to look at it and then get a number, and then get it started, encumber the money before the end of the year.
We could encumber a portion of it for that job, though.
Well, no, you've got to encumber it if you have a contract, right?
You need a contract.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we could get a contract to encumber some of it.
Okay.
Okay, I, before we, before we finish painting, before we talk about that, I think that's going to be okay. What's it, so this is... Give me how much, Bob.
Ballpark. Let me get the signs correct.
Can you highlight it with that yellow lighter in front of Dave? That way I know that when I'm quoting this to them, I'll know what to ask them to do.
What do we want to call that side, though, it's a west side, it is?
What, just give me 60?
6450 plus 850 for the removal and disposal.
Okay.
Lee, can you make sure in an email that Woody or the transfer station is notified that that siding will be coming from the police station and fire station, and they're to be able to dump it there?
No charge.
No charge. What was the total on that one?
Seventy-three.
And that is the better siding, she put the right one on the top, so...
And the second, that one we'll come back to.
Yeah, we don't have to second access, we already know it's high.
Seven-three-zero-zero, plus, let's go look at the ballpark figures here, if we go with...
Go with this one here, Mike, the 58 on that one. Do the tunnel on the other.
You got it.
Which tunnel for the one?
Forty-five, fifty. I'm at seventeen-six, nice, thirty-six.
And seventeen-two, roughly. If you're looking at 6450 for one, 5800 and 4550. I rounded it down to 34 because we put two, almost two grand for the generator last week.
So, it's about 16, 16, 16, 350.
Seventeen. What else did you include in that?
He was just rounding down, I took the generator out.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we can move forward on some of this.
Let me start on these.
Yeah.
Put these two together, you got a paper clip, Mike?
Yeah, I do.
I'll make a motion that we accept the quote from reliable coatings for the exterior staining and repairs on the transfer station, west side and south side, for a total of $15,800.
Anybody want to second that one?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Cameron, I think there were...
I think there were bits... Yeah? Okay. You got a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass, Lee, please. Lee, that's, whatever, I'll vote.
That one's acceptable.
Okay.
Next one, gentlemen, a paper clip, please. You got to take it. Yeah. Should I make a motion that we accept the bid from tunnel restorative painting for all of the exterior entrances on the police and fire building for a total of 4550 even?
Bob, second. Any discussion, gentlemen? Again, they were very comparative, and the thing is, you compare an apples to apples. All in favor? Aye. Any tunnel, has a bid?
Well, one advantage, too, is you only have one person that's got all, because we've got two competitive bids, and now you have two different people painting different buildings, and they can do it at the same time.
Yeah, forget it then.
Lee, can I ask you, just when you called... Could I make a motion that we accept a bid from tunnel restorative painting for all of the exterior entrances on the police and fire building for a total of forty-five fifty even?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Bob, second the hearing, any discussion, gentlemen? Again, they were very comparative and the thing is, you compare an apple to apples, all in favor? Aye. Any tunnel, has a bid?
Well, one advantage too is you only have one person that's got all because we've got two competitive bids and now you have two different people painting different buildings and they can do it at the same time.
Yeah.
Lean, can I ask you, just when you called them, to let them know that we'd like to get those done this year so that our balances, you know, get cleaned up as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's go, let's move on to siding. Uh, we're, we're talking about, uh, the first, for the west side, yes.
Yeah, the west side of the, uh...
Safety complex.
Safety complex, police and fire station. I think, uh, make a motion to accept the bid from JMR siding for a total of seventy-three hundred and that will be to remove and re-side with new Mastic Barkwood siding.
I'll second one.
Which, which side is that?
West side.
West side.
That's the entry side, uh, entry side to the public.
Do you have a paper clip for that one?
I sure do.
Lean, I circled the one and I told you that for you to give them a call.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
Any discussion on that?
No, I think, uh, when you call them, Lean, let them know that we're going to be acting on the backside in a few weeks.
If there's any mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, just talking about the safety complex, chief brought up something last week, I think, that we still have to at least start thinking about. We talked, we talked about the roof leaking at the juncture between the fire department and the police department. Maybe we can get it inspected and estimate if that's repairable and how much it's going to cost repair. And the other thing about the ice dam building up on the antenna, is they're going to have to build a small, what would you call it?
Cricket.
A cricket, a small cricket. I, I like to have at least some quotes so we can start discussing that. Gentlemen, what do you think?
It's not a bad idea. The roof is a little complicated because being met on, everybody, um, works on those.
But it may be, it could be as simple as a fashion issue between the juncture of the two, uh, doggies. So it needs to be, so we, we need to get someone to come up and look at it. So I'm going to ask Lean if you could initiate that for, so we can get that on the ball rolling because we may have enough dollars left in their maintenance budget to address that and leaks in the, in the roof is, I think, is, uh, borderlines are critical.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next item, gentlemen, in front of you, we have a memo from the town clerk. And it's, uh, why, this is for a civil forfeiture warrant. Um, this is, uh, basically, we have approximately forty-four dogs which have been previously licensed and now are now unlicensed and it's, it's to a point where it's going to become not only a liability for the owners, but also a liability to the public because licensing dogs has a lot, has nothing to do about, it's more, it's not about always collecting fees, but it's more a safety issue when it comes to, uh, licenses are only guaranteed, given out when dogs are immunized against rabies and that's a public health check of the dog licensing program, which was started in eighteen ninety-one in the state of New Hampshire. And so it's all about safety. Specifically, at this point, initially it was for prop, damage to a property and livestock, but now it's, uh, it's rabies in the dog population. So we have, uh, as I said, forty-four dogs at risk and what she's asking for is, uh, we read the memo, the ch, the chief of police to get involved, authorize a civil forfeiture fine of twenty-five dollars for each unlicensed dog listed on the town clerk report. And so it would require the chief, uh, make visits and deliver civil forfeiture notifications to each dog owner. That would require the dog owner to come in, pay late fees and get the dogs registered. Do we have any discussion on that? They, uh, the list, there's a list of dogs and owners, that name is confidential.
What happened last year when it was, they were late?
They basically, essentially, they get late fees when they, when, if they come in. But you can notice on the, on the list, there are some twenty-seventeen dates, they've been in arrears for two years. And so, God forbid, someone gets bit and then we find out the dog was not immunized against rabies and then the victim, the person who gets bit, has to go through a whole process of, uh, immunizations, I should say, treatment of injections and then the owners that lie are looking for it being sued and it becomes a myriad of complications.
So you give me a segue into a different area that is similar to that.
Okay.
We had a gentleman that registered a vehicle two years ago and his check bounced, but he drove around all year because by the time the DOT or whatever their process was, so they rebuilt him, so that when he paid this year, he paid with a check and the check bounced for the year before and this year. And so I'm wondering, you know, you know, dogs unlicensed, but you got somebody that's technically driving an unregistered vehicle, correct?
That's correct.
So I, I would like to know what's going on with that issue because the town should have some leverage as far as theft of services.
All right, in other words, do we, do we...
So I'm bringing that up now because it's a good time to bring it up and kind of get this cured.
I agree with that, okay.
You know, because I mean, next year he'll come in and say, oh, two years, I forgot, I'll give you another check and he'll drive around for another year.
Why don't we get an update on this from the town clerk?
That's what we need, that's what I'd like to get.
Yeah. Lean, we'll put that on Jennifer next week, who asked the town clerk to, uh, come visit us and give us an update. It can be in writing if she's got closure to it. If she's got closure, we can take it in writing.
Yeah.
She doesn't have to come in person.
We're just good, because I asked, I think, earlier this summer or late spring and it still wasn't resolved, so, you know, at some point in time, you're accountable for what you do.
Well, and getting back to dog licenses, uh, the town clerk did...
As long as they don't have to surrender their dogs to the chief, so he hasn't, what, forty-four dogs?
Town phone.
Okay. In a packet, there's an example of the letter she gave out to, uh, essentially, uh, she sent reminders of the past due dog license and it was ignored too. And then, uh, so this is the, this is the, uh, she also has a copy of the RSA which covers that.
Yep.
And then you have a list of, uh, violators, you might say.
I know.
You have a problem with, we have any problem with this?
I think that this is something that's been an ongoing issue that kind of gets a little bit lax every year and I don't know whether going down the avenue of sending the police department to people's houses for twenty-five dollars is the correct avenue that we want to go down as a select board only because, uh, you know, even though, these are all taxpayers in this town as well and I agree that they, something that should be done, but I'm thinking maybe a more, um, maybe a, uh, another notice from the town clerk's office rather than having the police department going up to each of these individual houses only because...
I thought she's already given them a couple of notices.
Looks as if they've been notified, it doesn't say how many notices.
Two.
Okay.
Two.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, this is the second one that they received.
Called the past due, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, well, they always get one, saying it's due, and then she just sends them one past due.
Right.
Um, you know, I think that if this stuff...
This is requested.
Goes on for another year, you, there were, there are a couple in there from last year, but all the rest are current this year. I don't think we should be sending the police department out there pissing everybody off about the dogs, myself.
Okay.
Going to create a lot of havoc around town for...
What is it?
Not a lot of revenue.
What does the RSA say that we have to do this?
No, I think this is something she's asking to get it done.
Right, this is the request.
It's a request, not a...
Well, the thing is, this is say, the local governing body shall within twenty days from June twentieth, issue, uh, issue a warrant to a local authorized official to issue civil forfeiture for each licensed dog. The warrant may authorize a local enforcement, a local law enforcement to seize any unlicensed dog as we go, we can seize it. Civil forfeiture may be sent by certified mail, delivered in hand and left at the abode by the dog, by the dog owner. Cost of the service, I don't see, seven dollars may make recovery in addition to the civil forfeiture. Talks about if the dog seized, the owner shall pay the, uh, facility the necessary reasonable sum per day, free to bond by the town governing body, each dog maintained by the facility. Before a local law enforcement officer seizes any licensed dog, a written warning shall be given to the dog owner. Talks about seizing dogs, we're not, I don't know, she's not suggesting that at this point. That, in answer to your question, Bob.
I can just see us buying all kinds of dog food.
Well, the thing is, remember when we established a agreement with the, uh, a couple months ago, about a month ago?
They didn't that quick if we dropped forty-four dogs.
I would say the same thing.
Those aren't three copies of the warrants, you have to sign, you sign one?
Yes, we got to sign one if we're going to know it. One thing is this, um, I like to study this for a week before we make a major correction on it. Uh, we can talk to Linda individually, gentlemen, and get, I want you to get her take on it.
I'd like to read, can, uh, you email us.
Everyone has a copy of it. Everyone has a copy, I gave you, everyone a copy.
Well, they're right there. Is that what they are?
Yep.
Memo with everything?
Yep.
This one?
That's one for you.
Yep.
He didn't say that.
Thanks for hiring them all.
No.
He didn't say that either.
We're all been looking at your...
Usually they all go in his case.
All right, thanks for making the copies, Lynn.
No, it was Linda, you got to thank Linda, Linda made copies of it all.
Yeah, I'd like to sit out of the week and kind of read it.
You already had one. You didn't, I didn't even look at your pile. You stand online. This is part of yours, this is part of yours, this is part of yours.
Oh yeah.
Are you sure?
No, I think we took one of ours.
Yeah, that's yours.
I have mine.
Okay, we'll, we, uh, we'll redress that next meeting, Will.
Okay.
I don't have any of those.
I think we made the two blocks a part of it.
I have some more. I think I can keep your packet. Okay.
Just don't leave those hanging around because they got names.
There's a privacy issue there. Okay, um, let's talk about mailbox items now. I have a, another notification that Denver, uh, the police officer is going to do a, uh, it's like a presentation on social, uh, predator's playground, going to be done on Monday, October twenty-ninth.
Yeah, put that sticker back on.
I just want to use that one to put on board.
Yep.
That'd be fine if you want to read that, so you write it.
Yeah, fantastic.
They actually didn't see that.
We have, I have no problem with that.
They're just notifying us about that.
Looks like the chief's going to be away, attending a conference, uh, October twenty-third, twenty-second, twenty-third.
Yeah, way up in Maine, nice place to go to a conference.
I tell you.
No, 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 that's different, that's down in Mass.
Oh, it is?
Vacation.
Then on vacation in Maine subsequently to the twenty-eighth and the acting chief of police will be, uh, side of our, this is FYI. Uh, Dave, last week, uh, you asked about, um, should Lean, can Lean get involved with, um, uh, not only provide admin support, but actually help them in the duties of the trustee fund?
Yep.
We got a legal, a nice opinion from the, from the legal department at NHMA, I think it was, uh, bottom line, they said, yes, of course she can.
Yep.
Which is good, so...
I agree with that too, that was good.
Yep, so, thank you, yeah. Lean, move on on that. When are they going to be having their first meeting for the year?
It was going to be the tenth, but they put off again, so I'm hoping that.
Okay. I still like the idea that, uh, if, if, if we have expertise that you have, uh, like the accountant or something like that, the gentleman we have on, on retainer.
I'll be seeing him in the next week or so, so I will ask him.
Yeah, that would still be good, this week, again, your plate gets filled too easily and the thing is, then you don't get the regular work done. Yep, we have another one. Uh, gentlemen, if you remember, we talked about last time, I don't know if we want to talk about this now, but this is about how to, uh, use of a town planner, planning boards, zoning boards, and, uh, how we interact with the public. Do we need to talk about this now or do you want to talk about it in non-public? Or, the thing is, the, one of the gentlemen who's going to arrive tonight is not here tonight, so I'd like to just defer that to the following, to the when he can, uh, discuss it with us and some of the issues. So I haven't, I don't really want to pursue that tonight because he's not here this evening.
Yeah, I kind of like the, I, you know, I'm looking that way too. I like to kind of delay it in case we decide to go in, in that direction and, uh...
I want answers.
That, some of the suggestions of the...
We have a non-public listed here?
Right.
I guess I'd rather, uh, talk about it non-public only because, uh, there's some sensitive issues, uh, for our town about it, so, but I think we should talk about it amongst ourselves without the person present first.
And we'll put that, we'll go to non-public tonight, uh, we'll talk about that later this evening. Okay, my mailbox, it goes to Lean, my mailbox is almost empty.
I don't know if you keep picking up the other stuff or anything.
Oh, I'm just making sure I, nothing goes into the black hole there. Wish I'd been there. Yeah, I know. Okay, I want to open up for our, our comment. Leo, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, about the dog licenses, you know, I guess if you send them another notice, a final notice, I guess, but you know something, if everybody chooses what, uh, licensing they want to get involved in, then that, that's kind of ridiculous. The law is the law. You said it's a safety issue.
It is a safety issue.
It's not trying to make dollars by any means because it's losing proposition here. So, otherwise, maybe I don't feel like, like getting licensed for something else in town and who's to argue with me because these people get away with it. You want a dog, follow the rules.
So noted, I think a dog is...
That's my attitude.
Is responsibility with owning a dog.
Exactly, that's my attitude and if we have to send the police, what, it's going to cost us money to do that, but you got to do something. You just can't let these guys keep...
We're going to, we're going to, we'll discuss some of the options, uh...
Yeah, well, that's my, that's my attitude.
We hear you loud and clear, so noted.
I mean, my, I always tell everybody, all abide by all the laws as long as everybody else does.
That's nice. Okay, I know, so noted, and I think it's, uh, we hear you loud and clear and so, um, but the thing is, we'll, uh, I said, we're going to just, we'll let it sit for a week when we review that. There's an RSA, I just, I was reading portions of it, I want these two gentlemen to have time to sit down, look at the RSA and make sure we're doing it.
And I'm glad you did because I was listening to that and basically that's what it's telling you.
Yep, so, almost like it's a mandate to us that we have to do something about. And the thing is, we're kind of limited with tools.
So if I get bit by a dog that's unlicensed, do I take it back to the, to the, uh, clerk and complain?
The dog?
No, the, the injury.
No, the injury, the police makes a police report, that's the first thing.
I, I understand, but if you guys don't do your job...
Then we're...
Do I, can I take, you know, come back to the town and say, hey, you got to fix this for me?
That's a possibility. And the thing is, we don't want to be, we're missing our job and so that's why we're going to study the RSA.
Right.
We're going to make the appropriate decision next week. Thank you.
I'll trust you for that.
He almost took all my thunder. Fred Mullin, uh, I was going to talk about the dog issue.
Yep.
Do the people, when they get a notice that the dog's license is in arrears, did they get a copy of that RSA?
I don't believe so.
But what's, this is something from receiving a copy then.
He'll take anything his friend, that, that might be one of our avenues to go down. Sending them that final notice as Lee said, and also sending a copy.
It just has a, it just, it does have some of the, probably references the RSA. It has a small, which is about the dog tags themselves, but it doesn't talk about, uh, the, the town's responsibilities. And what I, I was reading, early this evening, I was reading our responsibilities as a board, And what I, I was reading earlier this evening, I was reading our responsibilities as a board. We're charged with enforcing that.
Uh, that's correct. What I'm saying about, um, I thought you read something about if the dog's owners are in arrears, what they're liable for?
Yeah, I, yes, and I think that was.
And that's, that comes under an RSA?
Yes.
So if that portion of the RSA was given to them also, do they have a better understanding?
Uh, that's a possibility and that, that's something we'll probably discuss with the clerk. Especially if we go with one more, one more notice before we take action, that, that could be a, that could be an avenue we could pursue.
Yeah, but also are you doing a disservice to the people that do get the dog's license? Cause they're paying and those people are small flaws, really. But, you know, it's a small amount, but still.
It's, it's not only a disservice to those people, it's a diser, in my opinion, it's a disservice to the entire town because you go walking on, just walking in the town and you get bit.
Yep.
And the thing is, it's a disservice to anyone who walks in town.
Right. Well, not only that, if the dog has a license, the dog's lost or something, someone picks it up, at least they can track the owner of the dog that way too.
True. That's the benefit of the dog. Okay, so noted. And the thing is, I appreciate your comments and I think is, we're gonna, I think we're taking them in and, uh, we'll, uh, again, we're gonna make the appropriate decision next week. Okay, back to the board. I wanna go with Dave.
Um, I'm good. Lean discussed the siding quotes which we had, uh, and we talked about, so that was good. I'm gonna reach out to Cohen Steel. Uh, so we can try and wrap up that balance we have there by the end of the year and see if I get them to put, um, something together for the steel that's there and refabricating that steel and get one built back from us. We can take care of that.
And vice versa versus the, uh, wood option?
Yep.
Okay, 'cause the wood option was gonna be with, uh.
Yeah, but I'm talking about leaving them with that remaining balance that the other vendor left them with.
Oh, right. And the thing is, now there's what value the steel it has by itself.
Right.
Gotcha. The payment delta of that.
Yeah. But in that, I'll, I'll get, if we go the steel route, redoing all the ends of that steel so it's done, yeah.
Okay. Well, I.
He was gonna provide that service for free.
Okay.
The steel was paid for, so that's.
Okay, well, the thing is, uh, I, I think we were in consensus before that we wouldn't, uh, actually take care of paymentless steel, because we'd five thousand dollars go aside for it.
Right, so that's what I wanna work on with him. I'll try and get that done this week.
Okay, Bob, anything?
Uh, no, I'm trying to reach out for one of the committees in town to an individual, but I'm not having much luck, so that's where I'm at right now.
Okay. Town minister, I'm gonna have to go for you.
I don't have anything to bring. We're closing in on setting our tax rate, but I'm still waiting. They've got all the documents they need. I'm just waiting. I'll probably get them tomorrow, but.
Who's our first one on the agenda as far as budget meetings?
We haven't discussed that yet. You guys will have to come up with a.
We have to come up with a strategy.
Strategy meeting.
When did we start them last year?
It was, um, end of October, early November.
Okay, well, we have pending, hopefully by next week. We also have something to talk about is the, um, uh, in our strategy meeting, we'll have some of the healthcare plans which should be coming out by mid-October.
Yeah.
So that's, that's something that's imminent coming out. And then our strategy meeting, we'll talk about, um, how we wanna, the philosophy of how we wanna impact the town, uh, growth, steady state or, uh, pay raises, all those little things we'll put together. How we wanna spend money in that for next year. Okay, but that's, that's something to be thinking about.
I do have a couple of, um, busy Thursdays coming up. Not totally, but, um, we have a public hearing for Purgatory Pond. We have our exit conference with, um, Melanes and Heath. They're scheduled for the eighteenth, public hearings for the twenty-fifth, um, so those will chew up a little bit of.
Public hearing is scheduled for next week?
No, the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, okay.
Yeah, 'cause Jeff won't be back till.
Page's corner, they, they're, DOT is close to wrapping up their recommendations and we want a public hearing on that too.
And Lean, one more thing on Purgatory Pond. Are we gonna discuss the, um, turnaround area with the owner before that public meeting?
I think the packet is in the basket, um, and there's a lot of, there, there'll be an engineer's report, uh, the easement that they have agreed on and the language, and it's very clear as to what the, the area.
Remember the easement we wanted to work on with him, with the parking. I'd like to do that and at least talk with him about that before a public meeting because if not, I would make sure people like Leo are at that public meeting.
I think it does specify. It'll be the twenty-fifth, but.
So is he gonna be here the twenty-fifth?
He will be here with his wife.
Okay.
To speak on anything.
Hey, can, can you, ahead of time, if you recall, uh, early this year, you came in to talk about that and, uh, we reiterated, while we reviewed what was done in the past and we basically reaffirmed those stipulations. Could we just get a copy of those, Lean? So we at least keep him fresh online?
Check them all, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have, maybe I just.
I have driven down the road a couple times.
Should I send you the engineer's report electronically? That way you can just.
I had that from last time.
Okay, the final now?
Yep.
Okay.
We had the final and his review and his approval and all I was looking for was the signage.
Right.
But we just wanna make sure that what he agreed to is the right, the right thing.
Yeah, we should go through each of those criteria.
And then basically, we did an affirmation of what he would previously agree to before, with no diminution of the, uh.
Has he responded to the signage at all, Lean, or don't you know?
No, I don't, he has not. I was not aware that that was on the list, so. And Jeff is pretty good about, I'll make sure I get those things to Jeff and then highlight them.
What, Dave, that's, that's two weeks from now, correct?
Yep, the twenty-fifth. Um, actually, three. Because, um, I need to give fourteen days' notice.
Okay.
So I hope to have that in the paper by this Sunday, this.
Do you wanna send us the easement electronically or a copy, photocopy it?
The easement?
The verbiage.
Yeah, it's in the basket, but I could, it's just a two-page thing. It might be easier if you just get a copy.
Okay, why don't I do that? I'd like to read through it before the meeting.
Yeah. Likewise would be.
If you have a minute, I'll just print it. It's right in the basket.
Okay. Okay, Lean, nothing else for public?
No.
Okay, um, according to Secretary Ross said, okay, we're gonna basically, uh, close this section of the meeting. We're gonna go into non-public. So we're gonna take a two-minute recess where we set up for non-public.